We're ready.
Great, thank you. We'd like to call the November 7th, 2023 city council meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Go-to webinar transcripts of council meetings are available upon request after the council meeting. For real-time transcription, visit your Apple app or Google Play Store and download services such as Live Transcriber, Live Caption. The public is encouraged to join the meeting online or by phone at the number printed on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbarca.gov, or in person at the main auditorium, South Coast Air Quality Management District, right here. We have also allowed public comments to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. If any were received, they will be noted for the record when we get to the public comment period. This meeting is being broadcast, and by participating, you are given a permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Saturday and Sunday at 9:00 AM, and alternate Tuesdays at 8:00 PM, and archived for viewing on the city's website, again, www.diamondbarca.gov. At this point, we'll ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Protem Lu, and then please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor St. Bain from the North Minister Presbyterian Church. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. Please stand, hand over a heart, and face the flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every breath just as strong.
Pastor Bain?
Gracious and loving God, we come to you this evening with gratitude, even as we remember those who are suffering and displaced in so many parts of this world, remembering that you are Creator God, and that you care deeply for all your creation. We thank you for the city of Diamond Bar. We thank you for all the residents and for all the people who work hard to make Diamond Bar a place where every person can live with dignity and to flourish and to thrive. We ask for your wisdom and guidance and humility tonight for the city council. Be with them in their deliberations, discussions, and decisions. Help them to be the voice of the people, especially those who often feel unseen and unheard. Help them to lead with humility, gentleness, and patience. Help them to listen to one another and to all who are here tonight with open-mindedness and generosity of spirit. Grant them strength to tackle the challenges Diamond Bar faces with vision and perseverance, even those that seem intractable. Above all, give them a love for the community they serve, and help them to lead with gratitude and joy. May you bless the city of Diamond Bar so that Diamond Bar can be a blessing to its people. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you. City Clerk Santana, can you please take the role?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Lo, I'm here. Councilmember Tang?
Here.
Councilmember Tai?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lu?
Here.
Mayor Chow?
I'm here, thank you. We have approval of agenda. City Manager Fox, are there any changes to the agendas presented?
No changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. The agenda is hereby approved. There was a closed session at 5:30 to complete the annual performance review by city manager. There were no reportable items from the closed session. We'll now move on to item 1.1, Special Presentation Certificates and Proclamation. Today, we do have a proclamation for November 2023 as Family Court Awareness Month. I believe we have a representative from the Family Court Awareness Month Committee here with us. Ms. Fox, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to thank you for proclaiming that November is Family Court Awareness Month. Again, my name is Megan Fox. I'm a mom of two, which I do have one here present with me today. I'm a domestic violence survivor and a child safety advocate. I am here on behalf of the Family Court Awareness Month, and many parents here in Diamond Bar are active family court cases, bringing awareness on serious child safety issues that are happening in the family court system. As you heard, our mission is to bring awareness on how important it is for the family court system to be educated on these topics of domestic violence, childhood trauma, childhood emotional, physical, sexual abuse, and control. With all due respect, family court officers are attorneys and family court deals with very complex issues. Most time, family court rulings are widely based on a parent getting a fair share of parenting time with the child, even more than the safety of the child with the parent, which has resulted in numerous children's deaths and further abuse. Most would be shocked to know that in many states, including California, family court judges make rulings that impact children's lives, have zero mandated training hours in childhood trauma. However, with that being said, I can proudly say that on October 13th, Governor Newsom signed PKE's law into law, and that requires certain training topics are part of the judicial training. Most important, that rogue treatments that were happening in the family court system that were literally ripping children out of the safe parent's arms in the middle of the night have been banned in the state of California, and that is huge. Our children's lives are literally dependent on the courts becoming educated on these issues. This proclamation means the world not only to me, my children, but to many parents right here in Diamond Bar who have active family court cases. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we do have a proclamation to share with you, so if we can have the city clerk. Thank you so much. Any comments from our council members? No? Great. Thank you for being here, Ms. Fox.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item 2, City Manager Reports and Recommendations. We have first the Diamond Bar Restaurant Week and Open Rewards Program presentation. I believe we have our staff, Alpha and Danette, who will be presenting to us.
Good evening, everyone. This might be a little part of the evening where we all start to get a little hungry. So, I apologize. Now, in its eighth year, Diamond Bar Restaurant Week was celebrated October 1st through the 15th, and aimed to highlight Diamond Bar's unique local dining scene, co-sponsored by the regional Chamber of Commerce of San Gabriel Valley. Okay. The city council's broader economic development initiative tying in nicely with Diamond Bar Restaurant Week. What began in 2016, and even with a few variations throughout the years, has had consistent goals: to boost the local economy, foster entrepreneurship, identify and establish key network and collaboration opportunities, and strengthen community ties. I think we all recognize how important the local dining experience is to a community, and have aimed the city-produced marketing to promote local dining. The beautiful banners are always a nice indicator that Diamond Bar Restaurant Week is right around the corner. Many visitors typically rely on Yelp or some form of social media for food recommendations. Using social media increases visibility, customer engagement, and offers key analytics. Through Instagram campaigns and partnering with Yelp, just two video reels resulted in more than 30,000 views. Although Diamond Bar Restaurant Week occurs in October, the social media presence engages with the community year-round. These efforts result in a consistent growth of subscribers to both the dedicated Diamond Bar Restaurant Week social media accounts and direct e-subscriber list, combined a total more than 4,000 people. Yelp has a very simple mission, and it's connecting people to local businesses with seemed to us to be a pretty clear and wonderful partnership over the years. Part of their incentives to participate and write reviews on behalf of restaurants is an added incentive on the Yelp community to participate in future Yelp events, special events. Through the sponsorship of the chamber, we continue the dine and win promotion, where diners may submit receipts from any eatery and are entered to win a prize at the conclusion of Diamond Bar Restaurant Week. New this year is an open rewards program funded by the city's economic development program, where participants can earn rewards for dining, and there's more on that a little bit later. Amid so much economic uncertainty, it's clear that our restaurant family is growing. Diamond Bar welcomed eight new establishments to the Diamond Bar Restaurant Week family, including Bubbles &amp; Cone, Cold Stone Creamery, Crumble, Major Dumpling, Mas Pachon, Reborn Cafe, Solo Hot Pot, and Tokyo Ramen, to name a few. This is a really good indicator for us of a thriving environment of stability and growth potential for restaurants. One thing that I'd like to point out is that, you know, the city of Diamond Bar is the first city in LA County that has partnered with Yelp on behalf of the business community. Partnering with Yelp has enhanced the visibility of Diamond Bar eateries. It's also made them accessible to a broader audience. Since 2019, the city and Yelp foster engagement and build community around dining experiences. This year's Diamond Bar Restaurant Week kickoff event, Golden Hour, was no exception. As those of you that know and follow the dedicated social media, and for those of you that were there, you understand, you know, the attendance was 500 people. We had over 42 businesses representing San Gabriel Valley, and we were able to highlight Diamond Bar restaurants, who offered attendees a sample of the best that Diamond Bar has to offer. So I wanted to also mention that as part of this promotion, we were able to raise $7,000 for the Diamond Bar Community Foundation, and they certainly worked for it. So the registration table and the raffle table, they were full, and it was constant all night. Same with the San Gabriel Valley Chamber of Commerce, where that table was busy the entire night as well, promoting the chamber and also giving away some of the Diamond Bar Restaurant Week sweat. Sorry. Another fun experience, thanks to the owner of Barrows Coco, was Barrows Pizza Paint Night. It took place on October 12th from 6:30 to 9:00 PM, and we had more than 45 people in attendance, many from outside of Diamond Bar and a group of women from Eastville that thought it would be a nice way to have a work-related engagement activity. Barrows provided a special pricing on a combo meal for attendees, and again, there was no charge to the restaurant to participate. Everyone had a lot of fun and went home with a little decor for their home. And now, I'd like to invite Neve Cortez with the Regional Chamber of Commerce. He's the Vice President of Membership, to announce the dine and win winners.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. There's no question that we all would agree that the Chamber of Commerce, the city, the community came together for a wonderful event, and we all believe that a healthy community involves a healthy business community and a healthy restaurant section of that community. So thank you all for your participation, thank you the community at large for participating in this dine and win. The chamber sponsored three prizes for participants. Earlier this week, we conducted the raffle and selected three winners, and you saw one of them already. That first one is the third prize. It's a JY03 drone with a 1080 HD camera with LED lights, and the winner is Yi Pow. That is the third prize. The second prize went to L Hernández, and it's an Android tablet, 2GB of RAM, 64GB. 2GB, it's a good one. And the first prize went to Ms. Reyes. It's a Vizio 43-inch Class D Series FHD LED Smart TV, and that's all three winners. I'm sure we'll be excited to receive them. So we thank them for their participation. There were 141 participants in the drawing, and there were 604 entries, and these are your winners. The restaurants provided over 500 samples, and their staff manned the tables to provide, as Ms. Lopez mentioned, to over 500 guests. Like to invite the city council at this moment to come up front. We're going to present the awards, appreciate it, to the participating restaurateurs that have come this evening. Thank you. Again, all these restaurateurs provided over 500 samples of their goods, the wares. The first one they would like to announce is Barrows Pizza. Are they here this evening? Okay, they're working. They're making pizzas. The next one is Basil &amp; Company. They're all working, and that's a good thing. The next one is Chan Ki. Come on down. Yay! And then we'll take a picture. Our next one is, stay up here, Aziz. Don't run away. The next one is, our next participant is El Pirata Mexican Seafood. One's here. They're working. All right. Next one is Encore Tepan. Anyone? Good. And last but not least is Fusion 2. Anyone sushi? And Simon, or? There he is. Hey, Simon. No, two more. Now, these are not restaurateurs, but I'd like to give special recognition to the Diamond Bar Community Foundation. Anyone here? There you go. Jody. Jody Roberto, come on down.
How are you? Good to see you. I'll just give my hugs.
And last but not least is Yelp LA. Yelp LA. There she is. Yay!
Well, I want to thank the Regional Chamber for that presentation, and congratulations to all the winners. We'll now move on to item 2.2.
Mayor, if I may, we have one more part of that presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To talk about the Open Rewards Program. And Danette Allen will make that presentation.
Sorry about that.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, I would like to provide you with a recap of the Open Rewards Pilot Program. Open Rewards was originally developed by Blue Dot Technologies Incorporated, which is a purpose-driven application aimed at fostering positive economic growth in communities. It's currently operational in seven different communities spanning across seven different states, and it empowers cities to establish their own rewards program. This allows users to effortlessly explore local businesses, filter options based upon categories, and access relevant information. Following a strategic decision by our staff, we conducted a pilot program during Diamond Bar's Restaurant Week, which ran from October 1st through October 15th, and this was essentially to evaluate the application's effectiveness. Diners were offered a generous 20% reward simply by downloading the app and either uploading copies of their receipts or linking their card to the application. Upon verification of the transactions, rewards were promptly credited to the diner's Open Rewards account and could then be redeemed via their preferred payout method, whether it be Venmo, PayPal, or even a mailed check. And this would only occur after a second purchase occurred, or a second Diamond Bar Restaurant Week transaction occurred within the system. And what this does is it ensures that every dollar earned stays and benefits the local economy. So now, let's go ahead and dive into the successful outcomes of this pilot program. We initially started with a budget of $5,000, and over that two-week period, about $4,200 were distributed in terms of rewards earned. This in turn equated to a total economic impact of over $22,000, which was essentially a 5% return on the initial investment. There were 123 unique users, and of those 123 users, 114 of those ended up visiting Diamond Bar Restaurant two or more times. In total, that was 644 reward-earning transactions. And at the conclusion of every purchase, the diners asked the question, "Did Open Rewards influence your decision to go ahead and shop local?" I'm happy to report that 82% approximately of those individuals answered yes to that question. Considering the positive outcome of this pilot program, we're excited about the prospect of introducing future initiatives, which may include a broader economic development initiative, along with opportunities for future applications of the Open Rewards Program. This could take form of something along the lines of a Small Business Saturday, or even a Shop Local campaign. I know that was brief in nature, but that concludes my presentation, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions from council colleagues? No question. Thank you so much. Now, we'll move on to 2.2 for the City Government Explained update by our Assistant City Manager, Ryan McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Chow, and members of the city council. It's my pleasure to provide a brief update on the Diamond Bar City Government Explained Program. This is an eight-meeting series of meetings that were held at the Diamond Bar Center, each with an individual topic related to the city's governance and how it relates to residents. We wrap this up on October 25th, and that concluded our 2023 series. We will be bringing it back in 2024 for another round. So just to get a brief overview of what the program entailed, each presentation was advertised as 30 to 45 minutes. In truth, it was probably closer to 60 to 75 minutes. It was an opportunity for us to reach out to the community, consistent with the city council's goal of an open, engaged, and responsive community. This really was an opportunity to have informal meetings with members of the public, where we could talk about a number of different topics. We held them pretty much on a monthly basis, save for a couple months off during the summer so that everyone could attend the concert and movies in the park. This program was open to residents ages 16 and older, and we had a wide spectrum of ages that did participate. Each of the meetings was independent of one another, so participants were not required to sign up for all eight. They could drop in and out as they saw fit and based on their interest. I think this was a good example of a program shepherded by our Community Relations Division to get out to the community, go to the community rather than ask them to come to us, and it was, I think, a very successful opportunity to communicate about what the city does, its services it provides, the programs that it offers, and so forth. So the slide before you now shows an overview of the different meetings that we held. You'll see that there's a variety of topics. We got into pretty good detail in the time that we had, enough at least for everyone to leave, hopefully, a little bit more dangerous in their knowledge about their local government. So you'll see that some of them include the workings of city government, the role of the city council, general plan, public safety, traffic management, the city's budget, emergency preparedness, and how policy decisions are made. And as I mentioned, we'll be back in January 2024 for a new round. We plan to augment some of the current topics with guest speakers, some video shorts, and tours, so that there's a little bit of break between what I am speaking about. We'll give people a break from my presentations, give them opportunities to do something different. We plan to remain independent of one another in the meetings, so people can come and go as they like, and this time, we're going to hold the meetings at City Hall in the Windmill Room. And so if there's any interest in participating, please use the number on the screen to sign up or get some more information. We look forward to getting that out shortly and seeing everyone at our next round of meetings starting in January 2024. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, please.
What kind of guest speakers are you planning to invite to speak in these meetings?
We're still developing the content for the next round, but we'll probably bring in some other members of our staff. We may bring in participants from our public safety agencies. We did bring in during our emergency preparedness meeting, members of the LA County Fire Department to provide some tips on fire safety, hands-free CPR. So we'll probably do things along those lines, where we'll work with some of our government partners, our staff, and perhaps some of our other local, regional entities to bring in some other speakers.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now move on to item 3, Public Comments. Public comments, the time reserved on each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the city council on consent calendar items or other matters of interest not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Although the city council does value your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may only briefly respond to public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion and no action on such matters may take place. There is a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, we will call up speakers who have submitted a speaker card first, then City Clerk Santana will ask those callers on the phone joining us on the teleconference who may wish to speak under public comment. One thing I do want to point out, we do have a lot of cards to get through. I want to remind folks that it I want to remind folks that it is a business meeting, so we will hold applause and cheering to a minimum or none. So our goal is get through all the comments so everyone gets a chance to speak and have the opportunity to be heard. So we do have all the cards here, so we will get through all of this today, okay? But we ask you to please remember that it is a business meeting. So we will go and start with the first one, Aziz Amiri. Aziz, are you still here? Okay. And also, there are two microphones to speak. Depends on where you're... Oh, I'm sorry, just that one. I apologize. Just that one, sorry. Just that one.
I'm Aziz Amiri, CEO of the Regional Chamber of Commerce San Gabriel Valley. With me today is Ken Liebman, our president, and Neve Cortez, whom you know, our Vice President of Membership, Mayor Chow, City Council members, city staff, Dan Fox, Assistant City Manager Ryan McLean, and of course, Elfa Lopez. I had a lot of fun working with you, Elfa. Thank you. Today, we gather to celebrate remarkable journey of partnership on Diamond Bar Restaurant Week, promoting between our beloved city and the chamber, a partnership that has thrived for the past eight years. This collaboration has not only borne witness to the growth of Diamond Bar but also played a pivotal role in fostering economic development of our city's vibrant restaurant scene. As we reflect on this partnership and achievements, it has brought about, it is a moment of great pride for all of us. Throughout these eight years, the city of Diamond Bar has been steadfast leader in promotion of local restaurants. This year, our Mayor Chow has been an instrumental force in this endeavor, hosting his CEO lunch mob at our local dining establishments. This initiative highlights what our Regional Chamber fondly calls "gems in the Walls," restaurants that offer unique, outstanding culinary experience. It is a testament to the Mayor's Chow commitment to our community that he has championed these local dining treasures, ensuring they are not reduced to a mere label of "hole in the wall." This year, the chamber took a significant step by hosting a key event in our local restaurants. This event served as a platform to shed light on the city's three-year strategic plan, a visionary roadmap for the future of Diamond Bar. We were honored to have Mayor Chow as our featured speaker for this event, and this was invaluable as we discussed our collective aspirations for the city. In addition to these initiatives, the chamber initiated a collaborative effort with partnership with the city staff, the gas company, and the California Restaurant Foundation. This endeavor aimed to assist our local restaurants in qualifying for a 5,000 gas company grant. This support during these challenging times has been a lifeline for many of our cherished dining establishments. The good news today is at 3:30 today, I received an email that came from the California Restaurant Foundation. This year, nearly 11 restaurants in Diamond Bar has applied for this grant versus four. So that's a 300% increase in our term by the restaurateurs to apply for the grant, and I'll be in touch with the foundation to ensure that at least, at least four, five of our restaurants win the grant. In closing, I would like to express our sincere appreciation for this enduring partnership. As we move forward with the referral drawing that we already did, let us remember the journey we have taken together and the exciting path that lies ahead. Thank you all for being part of this wonderful journey, and there are many more to come. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Aziz. Thank you. We'll now call on Farhad Ganja. Would you please come forward? And I apologize if... Yeah, Farhad, there you go. Thank you. Right here. And just so we can have you be prepared, the next person will be Dr. Imri Azbaz Ray. So you'll be next, okay? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and all the attendees. Just a brief introduction. My name is Farhad Ganja, and I've been a resident of Diamond Bar since 1980, which is more than 40 years. This city is very dear to us as all our three kids grew up here and had their education in this outstanding school district. I am a retired physical therapist and had several opportunities to provide home health care in Diamond Bar as well as in the vicinity. Today, I am here to address the tragic events happening in the Middle East. After initial days of retaliation in October, I was hoping that the next day, when I wake up, I will hear some good news, news of cessation of war or talks of ceasefire. Unfortunately, we see every day getting worse with more deaths, more destruction, and now even to my further dismay, Palestinians in West Bank are being targeted. My heart bleeds and very saddened when I hear and watch unspeakable atrocities and complete destruction of innocent Palestinians in Gaza due to nonstop aggression. The Israelis' bombs have targeted indiscriminately water resources, food, electricity services, as well as hospitals, schools, and ambulances. Additionally, journalists and UN healthcare workers and their families have also been targeted and killed. They are not also allowing any foreign journalist to cover the real facts on the ground. Just yesterday, a UN secretary commented that Gaza has become a graveyard for children as now more than 4,000 children have been killed and 20,000 children have been injured. So I had hoped that our US government would stand for equal rights and justice for oppressed Palestinians as we are doing for the country of Ukraine. But I'm deeply saddened by the hypocrisy and the mortal failure of our US government of offering unconditional support to Israel, both in terms of aid and armaments. So this evening, I am here to raise my voice on behalf of the oppressed people of Palestine and demand that the US government call for an immediate ceasefire. Secondly, I demand that our US government stop sending the aid to Israel. Any aid that goes to Israel is our hard-earned tax money. So in the end, I say unconditional ceasefire now. Stop aid to Israel now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Dr. Bazry next, and after you will be Zakir Ganja. So if you want to, please come up and be ready. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name is Imtiaz Bazry. First of all, I'm very appreciative of all of you for your terrific public service for our city and making it a better place to live in. My family has been here since 1984, and I'm particularly impressed with Mr. Thai for his years of service, Ms. Lo, and of course, Mr. Chow for being so accessible. Anyway, I'm not flattering. I'm telling what I feel and what is factual for me. The other two gentlemen, I don't know them well enough, so I won't be able to say much. Anyway, so coming to the point, obviously, I'm here for the Palestinian issue. And I'm going to focus only on one context, and this is because professionally, I am a child psychiatrist. And I have served Department of Children and Family Services in LA County for 30 years, and I have taken care of abused and neglected children for that long. Working with traumatized children, it's extremely painful in itself, and I would bring home the woes and the pain that I would experience in my work. So now comes Palestine. And as of this morning, I'm only going to focus on the children issue. As of this morning, 4,237 is the number given for children who died in Palestine in this last one month. We know, it was just mentioned that 20,000 children have been injured, and the estimate is about 1,350 children are buried under the rubble. Most of them presumed dead. It really, 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 really hurts me. Again, I'm making it short. It's too emotional for me. I'm urging the City Council, this City Council, to draft a resolution asking for immediate cessation of hostility in Palestine. And furthermore, I would like to... The resolution to also include aid for the besieged Palestinian people. All the details are in the media if you care to look at it. This is no longer, in my mind, a political or a religious issue. It is a humanitarian issue. I hope this makes sense to you all. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Zakir Ganja next, and then after you, we have Nacer Hamidad. If you want to... Thank you. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and all the attendees. My name is Zakir Ganja, and I'm husband of Farhad Ganja, the earlier speaker. As she stated, we moved into Diamond Bar more than 40 years ago. I'm a practicing financial advisor. This evening, I am here to address my views and my firm stand regarding the relentless aggression that is taking place by our so-called strongest ally, Israel. At times, our government takes action that we do not necessarily agree, but because we live in a democratic society, we have no alternative but to accept them. However, the position and the action that President Biden and other congressional leaders have adopted in support of Israel is something beyond my tolerance. The protest going on now, not just in cities of the United States, but across the world surely echoes my sentiment. I side myself with many peace-seeking people of our country and other people of the world who oppose the continued Israeli aggression and frankly, do not accept the full pretense of self-defense. The combined action of Israel and USA is counterproductive to moral ethics and peace-seeking objective that our government attempts to exhibit to the people of world. Therefore, this evening, I am here to say I simply cannot and will not tolerate the unwavering support that our president and elected leaders have pledged to Israel. I simply cannot and will not tolerate the continued bombardment and destruction of cities, schools, and hospitals in Gaza. I simply cannot and will not tolerate the ongoing carnage and slaughter of innocent children. As I speak, more than 4,000 children have been killed, and many more may be lying under rubble, Israeli bombing results in killing one child every 10 minutes. I simply cannot and will not tolerate an aid of $14 billion being considered to be given to Israel to perpetuate the daily misery and sufferings of Palestinians. This is an aid in addition to an annual aid of $3.8 billion given to Israel on a regular annual basis. And lastly, I simply cannot and will not tolerate to see my hard-earned tax money being abused or to bluntly say being used to destroy Palestine, especially by its occupier, Israel. Ladies and gentlemen, I have come in front of you tonight with the hope that with your help, my voice will be raised and reach the appropriate sources in our government to effect the decision-making. And lastly, I will also add that the action that our leaders have taken has certainly changed my voting preference. Thank you.
Okay. We have Nacer Hamidad. Can we have Rohad Zaidi? Get ready to be next. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, people in attendance. Salaam alaikum, ladies and gentlemen. I greet you in all the words of peace unto you and to your families. I stand before you today with a heavy heart, burdened by the pain and injustice that plagues our world. I can no longer remain silent about the actions of my own government, actions that have left me deeply conflicted and disheartened. In Palestine, there is a country oppressed by conflict and violence where innocent lives are shattered daily, where the cries of suffering echo through the valleys and streets. Palestine, a nation that yearns for peace, a ceasefire, a glimmer of hope in the darkness of despair. This very thought of this situation pains me deeply. But what adds salt to the wounds is the fact that my own government, the government that I voted for, the government that I should be able to be trusted, is supporting and funding these conflicts, contributing to the suffering of a people who need our compassion and solidarity. It is the betrayal of the values and principles we hold dear, the principles of justice, compassion, and humanity. While I acknowledge that our nation faces its own challenges, I cannot condone the diversion of precious resources and funds towards supporting Israel. When there is an urgent and pressing issues that demand our attention and resources right here in our homeland, the United States of America, people here are struggling. Our infrastructure is crumbling, and yet we find ourselves entangled in the web of international conflicts that bring no true benefit to the United States of America. I implore my government to reconsider its priorities, to redirect our resources toward solving the problems within our borders, to address the cries from help from our own people. It is not a sign of weakness to embrace empathy and justice. It is a testament to our strength and moral character. Let us stand together in the name of compassion, peace, and justice. Let us raise our voices and demand accountability from our leaders. Let us strive to make a nation a beacon of hope and be nonviolent, both at home and abroad. For it is the moments of these challenges and reflection that we have the opportunity to show our true character and what we as a nation truly stand for. With a sad heart, I ask the city of Diamond Bar to please condemn the bombardment attacks on the Palestinian civilians in which today there are 11,000 women, men, children, fathers, mothers, killed, and 1.8 million displaced from their homes with no food, water, or electricity anywhere to be found. Please request, rather demand, a ceasefire. Not for me. Please, request, rather, demand a ceasefire, not for me or the others in attendance, but for the humanity of our world. God bless you all and free Palestine.
Please, thank you. Please, hold the applause, please. We want to get through all the cries, so please hold the applause. We have Rohad Zaidi, and please, the next person is Mohamed Zaidi, please be, come up and, oh, thank you, go ahead, thank you.
Salaam alaikum, respected members, Mayor and City Council members and all the attendees. I am, I agree with all the speakers that just spoke, so I am not going to repeat what they said. What I'm saying is that, like everybody else said, that more than twelve thousand people, kids, people, innocent kids, mothers, fathers, old people, sick people, have been killed in one month. And this is a very conservative estimate. And it is in the city of Gaza. And if anybody wants to know, city of Gaza is surrounded by hostile Israeli army, not since October seventh, but decades before that. Israel controls their electricity. They can turn it on anytime, they can turn it off anytime. Israel controls their water. They can turn it on anytime, they can turn it off anytime. Israel controls what goes and who goes inside there and who comes out. They can go and demolish your home, and you don't have cement that can go and make it back, make, you can make back your home. So, so this is a complete rule by apartheid system of Israel. And this is a situation before October seventh. And UNO has a lot of numerous times, we have, there have been countries who, who presented resolutions against this system. But every time, it is vetoed by whom? Us, the most powerful nation who claims humanity, democracy, and law and order. We are the ones who always veto those resolutions. My question to you is, and then our leaders, so-called leaders, elected representatives, I should call, I should ask all of you, all of you, do you support anybody in your life unconditionally? I, myself, I would not support my child unconditionally if my child is committing crimes. So how come we are not raising our voices to tell our elected representatives that there is no such thing as unconditional support? The support should be where it's needed. We are a country of law and order. Why should we support the crime against humanity unconditionally? What happened on October seventh is horrendous. They should find the people who did it and punish them accordingly. But self-defense does not mean you should go and bomb the cities, their houses, the innocent children, the hospitals, indiscriminate bombing of innocent children, ambulances, hospitals, UN schools should not be accepted. And that's the reason I'm asking the Diamond Bar City Council to draft a resolution for immediate ceasefire and stopping of the hostilities against the Palestinian people who have suffered more than enough by now. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, hold, hold, please, we have Mohamed Zaidi, when we come up, please identify and just confirm your, your, your name. And after you, we have Sharif Vatican. Sharif, please be prepared, thank you, go ahead, thank you.
Good evening, the honorable mayor and the respectable city council members. My name is Mohamed Zaidi, and I'm very thankful for the city of Diamond Bar Council to allow me to give my public comments on the ongoing Israeli-Palestinian war. I'm here to protest against the UN, against what the UN and several countries of the world have called the genocide of innocent unarmed Palestinian civilians in Gaza by the apartheid regime of Israel. And to date, it is reported that since October seven, approximately ten thousand, at least ten thousand innocent civilians have been killed. And they mostly included children and women. And I can, I, from the Instagram, I've seen a father carrying the upper body of his son, seven-year-old son, and the lower body is not there, and hand is dangling, and he's dead. I've seen the images on Instagram that two little children, five and three, are trembling. Can you imagine the torture, the mental torture, the psychological destruction of their minds? This is, this is, this is, this is, this is human crime, this is criminal, this is totally criminal, and in any, any, this, this does not conform with the human values of, of good civilized people. Not to, not to, not to speak of the, our US, United States of America, which claims to be the best democracy in the world. That's not democracy. Democracy should, it should support the human rights, equal rights, justice, equality, anywhere in the world, domestically and in the foreign countries. So, this genocide is being supported by approval of fourteen point five billion dollars of US taxpayers' money, initially proposed by our president, Joe Biden, and then almost unanimously approved by almost all our senators and congressmen this week. It appears that these elected officials, who are supposed to represent the will of the people, the American people, have lost their abilities to distinguish between right and wrong, and they have lost their souls, and they are only loyal to those big campaign donors who have supported their campaigns. That's not we elect the people for. They, we want the, our elected officials to represent us, but not only the elite mega donors like AIPAC and billionaires, because we, we are the one who voted for them, so they should work for us. The US government has previously already given three hundred seventeen billion dollars of financial and military aid, and the military aid included fighter planes, Iron Dome, missiles, tanks, and everything else to Israel between nineteen forty-six and twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. And compared to a few, few, few million dollars to the Palestinians for their survival just above the starvation level. And Palestinians living there have never been given their equal rights as they, as they have been given to the Jewish citizens of Israel. I strongly condemn the Hamas, the military wing of the Palestinians, for killing more than one thousand innocent Israelis, and kidnapping two hundred twenty civilians, Israelis. But I also condemn, strongly condemn, the Israeli apartheid policies and the IDF, the Israeli Defense Forces, for killing hundreds of thousands of innocent Palestinians since nineteen forty-eight, bulldozing their ancestral homes and forcing them to leave Israel for good into neighboring countries, and then building settlements on the vacated or bombed, bombarded Palestinian lands.
Thank you, Mr. Zaidi, thank you. Your time's up, thank you. Next, we have Sharif Vatican. If I can have Aya Ismail, please be ready, you're next. Thank you. Go ahead, thank you.
Salaam alaikum. My name is Sharif Vatican, and I'm a computer engineer by profession. Mr. Mayor and council members and all the attendees, I'm here to call out the dire situation in Palestine and call for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. I'm also here to oppose any present or future resolution in support of Israel by this council or anywhere in our country. Any resolution that declares unwavering support for Israel in reality is your support for a racist apartheid colonialism, illegal occupation, and terrorism towards the people. The apartheid state of Israel has subjected the indigenous Palestinian people to seventy-five years of mass displacement, humiliation, and torture. People with any sense of history knows Hamas is an excuse to finish the ethnic cleansing the Zionist project started a century ago. The Israeli state is a terrorist organization you all should be condemning and cannot fathom, I cannot fathom by what standard of morality one can talk about the right to self-defense of a colonial state that has committed acts of terror towards Palestinians for seventy-five years. More than ten thousand, I repeat, more than ten thousand of Palestinians people have been killed in last three to four weeks, with half of those, four thousand plus of those are children, and many more are injured. How many more innocent children you have to kill to defeat Hamas? If you have any real humanity in you, you would stand with thousands of people and children who are being bombed and killed right now in their homes, hospitals, schools, and mosques and churches in Gaza and West Bank with no end in sight. And instead, all of these people here in politicians like you are choosing to stand with the colonizers over colonized, oppressors over oppressed. But the world stands with the Palestinians. Millions of people all over the world and hundreds of thousands of people in cities across the US have taken to the streets in the few, last few weeks to demand the end to an Israeli apartheid and occupation and end to the genocide bombing of Gaza and end to all US aid to Israel immediately. And this protest movement for a free Palestine is making a difference. Millions of people in the US are cutting through the lies of the corporate media and politicians like you and are learning the truth about Palestine. On November fourth, three hundred thousand people from across the country marched to White House to make it loud and clear to, to our president, Joe Biden, and the imperialist Congress that the people refuse to fund genocide, people refuse to fund apartheid, refuse to fund colonial occupation, and we maintain that. The resistance is justified, that resistance is justified when people are occupied. We will not condemn the resistance of colonized people against colonialism. And there can be no peace without justice. So those who want peace and justice for all people in Palestine should demand an end to Israel's illegal colonial occupation. They must demand the fall of Israeli apartheid. They must demand a ceasefire now, free, free Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Aya Ismail, please come up, and after you, we have Armin Israel, I'm sorry, yeah, Armin Ismail, thank you, go ahead, thank you.
Good evening, all respected members of council and all the members in attendance. My name is Aya Ismail. I'm a stu-, I've been a student in the Denver city for such a long time, from elementary school to middle school to high school, and now gladly, I'm in the Mount Sinai College, community college. I've been here for so long, this is my home. At this very moment, there are bombs raining down in Gaza on innocent children, women, and This is a genocide, an act of genocide which is illegal by the UN national, national law by Israel. Not only is the US government not condemning this action, but we're actually supporting it with billions and billions of dollars. I will not stand for this, and neither will you. Tonight, you have, all of the respected members of council have heard more than enough evidence to conclude that this is illegal, and we will not stand, we will not give our tax dollars for this. You have more than enough evidence for this. Not only is all of this going down in Gaza and Israel, but this is coming back to the United States. In the past month, so many Islamophobic hate crimes have been acted on, including the six-year-old Palestinian boy, Wadea Al Fayyom. He was stabbed to death by a propaganda-filled neighbor and landlord. How long will you wait to stand with the people of Palestine? How long, what, what crime needs to happen in order for you to stand for Israel? My six-year-old daughter, my six-year-old sister, Fatima, is in the crowd tonight. What if it was her? Will you wait until she is killed too? I demand a ceasefire now. I demand my home city of Diamond Bar to call for a ceasefire. We have the power, we have the information. Ceasefire now, thank you.
Thank you. Armin Ismail, please come up, Armin. And Erfan, I think, Park, Perak? Oh, thank you, please go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Armin Ismail, the father of Aya Ismail. I echo her sentiments, dear respected council, mayor, my fellow brothers and sisters in the audience. We are deeply hurt, saddened by the events that have happened. I think you've heard a lot of what's happening and the tragedies that are taking place. I often think about what we can do here in this community, where we live, where we work, where we have businesses, where we shop, where we're, we talked about inclusiveness, we talked about, you know, the Restaurant Week and how we can support local businesses. And now I, I was thinking about how can we support one another? And we are here to express our anger and frustration, and that goes without a doubt. But I'd like to propose to the council, perhaps something that they could do besides the resolution, that they can take to the city level, the county level, and on to the state level, and onwards to the federal level. There's something that is taking place that is, that is causing great concern. I'm a father of five, this is my third child, I have two that are in grad school and two young ones that will follow their older sisters. One of my daughters is an English teacher, and she teaches a subject called critical media literacy. And it's very important that she brought this up to her class in these days because of what we're seeing in the biased media. I think everyone can, can echo my sentiments, so if you watch CNN or MSNBC or any of the, you know, fake news as they've been blamed in, for political purposes, how everything is one-sided. I, just two days ago, I returned from my trip from China, and I know that China has its issues with Hong Kong and even Taiwan, and I watched the news while I was sitting in China, and I saw the one-sidedness of what was being presented to condition the public that lived or watched the news there. And the same thing is being done here. However, we're in America, this is a land of immigrants. We are free to practice and believe what we believe and voice our opinions, and we have the freedom of our speech. But I think it's very important that as a city, that we stand for inclusiveness, we do something about educating the young children, the new generations, the future generations that are going to come after us. And, and that starts with this bias that takes place in the media. And if we perhaps had a workshop to teach about critical media bias and how words are used, for example, if I, if I, if you look at the words that are saying, the Israelis were killed, however, when we talk about the Palestinians, they just died. And what does it imply to the reader or the or the listener of this news? If someone is killed, you know, it implies malicious intent. Whereas if someone died, it was something that just was a casualty of war. But those of us that are in this audience, because we're so close to the situation, we understand the truth. And these problems happen all over the world, in Africa, in China, with the, you know, with the Uyghurs that are there. Most recently, in Rohingya. And the list goes on and on. So I just wanted to propose to the council that if we had a workshop, perhaps for the community, especially those that are not so attached as we are here in this audience, that we can teach the people and more so, teach the young children, because these are our future journalists. And these are our future news reporters and our future council members that are going to be sitting on councils such as you are today, that they understand and they report what is happening in a more truthful manner and a more unbiased manner so that in the future generations, we create leaders from our communities, from Diamond Bar, that are going to be the next senator and the next president so that we don't have the mistakes that our president is making. We all talk about the tax dollars that are going in the wrong place and is being done by our government. I know I have only 30 seconds, but I just feel that since we have tax dollars that we all are paying here in the city of Diamond Bar, that perhaps those tax dollars could be used to educate the people in Diamond Bar in this subject of critical media literacy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have Erfan, it's Parek, I'm sorry. And then after you, we have Fazila Parek. If you can be on standby. Thank you. Go ahead.
No worries. Erfan Parek. Mayor Chau, respected city council members. Thank you for your service to the community. I'm someone who grew up in Diamond Bar, and my wife and I raise our three children here. We live here, work here, and our children attend school and play sports, all in Diamond Bar. I'm here today along with countless others to share the impact the bombardment of innocent civilians, women, and children in Gaza are going through. I'm not Palestinian, but I cannot stay silent while over 4,000 innocent children have died as a result of this ongoing genocide. As public officials, you understand the impacts of blockades and how crucial water, electricity, and access to medical care are to our lives. If I was to tell you that our neighboring cities control who and what comes in and out of our city, what would we call this situation? Would you accept a lack of electricity and water for our city? Why should we accept this for anyone? This is an open-air prison. Our government continues to support this genocide by sending our tax dollars and weapons to the occupiers. As I stand here on Election Day, I ask you, our locally elected leaders, to educate yourselves on the root cause and to take a stand against this genocide and to continue to push for a ceasefire. We will not stop our efforts until our government stops supporting this genocide and holds those accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Erfan. Fazila Parek, thank you. If we can have, I'm so sorry. Siraj Sabani? Thank you. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. I have lived in Diamond Bar my entire life, from Walnut Elementary to South Point Middle School and Diamond Bar High School. I actually remember when we elected Councilman Steve Tye almost 20 years ago. In fact, when, you know, the Restaurant Week was being mentioned, you guys brought up Barrow's Pizza, and that's where my family used to have our weekly dinners, pizza dinners. So I've been here a long time. We love Diamond Bar so much that we are raising our three children here. In fact, you'll see me as the crazy sports mom at the baseball fields or the football fields or even the basketball courts. I really do thank God that I have always felt safe in Diamond Bar, in this city. Even during 9/11, when Islamophobia was on the rise everywhere in the nation, Diamond Bar was always a safe haven for me. I had never realized what a privilege it was to feel safe until now when I see the images of Palestinian mothers and fathers crying for their dead children. When I see clips of orphaned children covered in blood and dust shaking from shock and view the videos of babies fearing the sounds of bombs raining down on their cities. As a mother, I find myself, no. As a human, I find myself crying myself crying to sleep many nights, realizing how helpless I feel that I can't do anything for the Palestinian people who are living through an ethnic cleansing. I don't know how anyone can sleep soundly, to be honest, knowing that there is a genocide happening in the world right now. 4,000 children, 10,000-plus people. And we are watching silently. Enough is enough. I plead with you, council. Please do what is in your power to call for support, draft a resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza. As Martin Luther King once said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." Please, call for a ceasefire. We look to you as our elected officials. I voted for many of you. So please do your job and help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Siraj Sabani? Thank you. And if I can have, I think Haroud Parquet? Is it, I think it's H-A-R-O-O-D, Parquet? Oh, thank you. Go ahead. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Siraj Jabani. First, I greet you with the greeting of Islam, the greeting of peace. Assalamualaikum wa rahmatullah. I just wanted to take this moment. You know, you guys can clearly see that a lot of the audience is here for one reason, and that's the injustices that we're witnessing in front of our eyes going on overseas in Gaza. It's really been a different, you know, situation. And I think because of the times that we live in, you know, this is not an area that's new to conflicts. We've been seeing these conflicts for the last several decades. And I think that this time, because of the advent of technology, because of the advent of social media, we've seen a much different picture of what's going on. And what I mean by that is, you know, before, we were really exposed to only our news sources here, which gave us a very biased picture of what was going on. And now, with social media outlets, we're actually seeing footage from people that are there, people that are on the ground. And so it's very appalling to see, you know, women and children and families being murdered in their own homes. And so I call on you as a longstanding citizen of the city of Diamond Bar, having grown up here, to take a stand as a city of Diamond Bar, to take a humanitarian stand against the injustices that we're witnessing in Palestine. These people have been deprived from their basic human rights, you know, food, water, electricity. Even communications have been cut off at times. And so people are unable to communicate or find out, you know, what's going on with their families over there. And we have several members in our community who have family there and specifically in the Gaza Strip. And so, you know, we don't want to sit here idly while our tax money and our tax dollars are being funneled over there to support a genocide. And so I ask each and every one of you to, number one, just educate yourself about the situation and get a better understanding of the history of that region. And number two, to take a humanitarian stand against the injustices of what's going on. You know, we as the citizens of this city, this beautiful city, would love to see our elected officials and our elected leaders stand on the side of the truth and the side of justice. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Haroud Parek. Please come up. And next, we have, please be on standby. It's, I think it's IQBAL? Am I spelling that right? Mohammed, it's the last name? Oh, I'm sorry. Please be on standby. Thank you. Go ahead. Thank you.
Honorable mayor and city council, my name is Haroud Parek, and I'm 90 years old. I live just above you. I've been living here for more than 40 years. And I've been here in the United States for more than 50 years. So half of my life, more than half of my life, I have been in the United States. And 40 years, you see, I've been here, you see, above you, just above you. I live just above this. And I greet you all with the greetings of peace. Assalamualaikum wa rahmatullah wa barakatuh. May the peace and blessings of God be on all of you. See, I have, in my life, you see, I've seen a lot of problems going on around the world. You see, the first, when I was a very young child, we were coming from Japan just before the Second World War. And you see, well, we were on the last ship that left Japan for India. And at that time, you see, I have seen what was going on because our ship was caught in a typhoon and it was completely destroyed. And when we came in, we were like refugees. We didn't have anything. We were given shelter in Singapore, and we stayed there for a few days. And the business people on there, you see, helped us. And then we went to India. And you see, after that, I've seen other things going on. You see, with the massacre of Muslims coming from India to Pakistan. And you see, and then from there, you see, we came here. You see, so I saw the difference and the openness in this country for most of the people and the justice and all these things which attracted me to this country. And that is why I came here and lived here. And I have my family here and my grandchildren. You see, all are born here. So you see, now, coming to this thing, I think that we all are agreed that this is a humanitarian crisis. You see, and our government is not doing what it should. You see, we are not, all of us, you see, have a responsibility to take care of. And you see, at this age, I know that I am not going to be here for very long. And I can see that I am responsible to a higher being, you see, that has created us, all of us. And we are all responsible. I can see that very clearly. So I urge you, you know, you guys are, most of you are younger than me. And I think that you would recognize that, you see, our mortality. And then we are going to be presented as a witness to what has happened, and we'll be responsible for what we have done. So I hope that you do the right thing. And you see, try to do whatever you can so that, you see, the wrongs that have been committed are taken care of. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have Mr. Mohammed. Please come up. Thank you. And then after you, we have Fazil Chauhan. Please be on standby. Thank you. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor and Councilman, I wish I was better prepared to speak today. I have not too many words to say today except what we see in the news, one-sided news. And then we see on the social media, the second part of it. And it is heartbreaking. I wish, I'm going to make it short. I wish our government helps Palestinians as well as they are helping Israel, you know, to create all this nonsense, basically. We are paying tax. We've been with L.A. County for 30 years, working for L.A. County, and we have been paying tax. And that tax money, instead of being used over here to help our people over here, they're using that at the wrong places. I wish that changes. And I wish you all can help to make that changes for us. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fazil Chauhan, please come up. And next, we have Fatima Trabazi. She's still here?
Honorable mayor and council members and friends and family who are gathered here. My name is Fazil Chauhan. By profession, I'm a social worker, therapist. I have lived in Diamond Bar for 23 years. I have, as a social worker, we look at macro factors, including historical trauma and intergenerational trauma. For example, people who are living in occupied territories go through. I have come to you before to a number of times in these council meetings to talk about the military-industrial complex, to urge you to remove the banners from the city which celebrate war. I have come a number of times to ask you that. So to my brothers and sisters who are gathered here today, please make sure that you hold our elected officials accountable to remove those banners who have been here for 20 years, since 9/11, since the war on Afghanistan, since the war on Iraq. I am, my mother was a refugee from Jammu and Kashmir to Pakistan. Her four brothers were also refugees. They migrated to Iraq in the '60s and '70s. Two of them settled there, had kids there. And so when the war on Iraq, the American imperialistic war in Iraq created, what resulted in more than a million people killed, those are brown, black, Muslim, poor people that America does not care about. As they say, a white woman's tears can move mountains. But a brown woman or a black woman or a Muslim woman or a poor woman, America does not care about them. America cares. America's heart bleeds for the white refugees from Ukraine. But we don't care about the millions of black and brown and Muslim and poor people killed around the world in our name. America has, the American empire has 800 military bases in 70 countries. You can look it up. It's a political article. The Israeli war is part of that military-industrial complex. America has been at war, on average, every year for the last more than 100 years. And I have written papers on this. So a lot of the public, American public, does not believe that there's such a monster called the American empire. A lot of, as others have mentioned, the propaganda and the indoctrination that happens from childhood that people are, like the brother said, the critical thinking does not happen. And the fake news doesn't help, and it creates Islamophobia, the hate of Muslim people, which results in hate crimes, including murder. people, which results in hate crimes, including murder. You know about xenophobia, the phobia against Chinese people and people of East Asian descent. And xenophobia, the fear of the other, xenophobia leads to war. So, a lot of times, the war is about us versus them. And that's the same military banners that you have on our streets for 20 years, and we criticize China and other countries that, or, you know, they have these military parades. Every time I drive under these banners, I'm like, am I in a, in one of those countries? So you see these banners, and I believe that those were funded by the Pentagon, or they asked all the cities in the countries to do that. Chino Hills has them, but right next door, Walnut does not. So I'm asking you to look at this indoctrination of the military-industrial complex that Eisenhower warned us against. And the Israeli war, America doesn't have a problem with it, because America doesn't have a problem with all of the other wars that America creates. Israel is a close ally and partner, and that's why the genocide goes on and the occupation goes on for 75 years, occupation of Palestine. So I urge you to pass this resolution, and I urge you to remove those banners. Be like Walnut, celebrate education and achievement. Thank you.
It's Fatima Trabazi here. Is Fatima still here? No? Okay. Then we have Noor Hassan. Is Noor here? Sir, are you Noor? No? Okay. Then we have Imma Hafiz. Is that you, sir? So it's Imma Hafiz here? Is she not here? Okay. Okay, we'll keep her card. Then we have, is it Malia Azam? Sir, did you fill out a card already?
I'm speaking on her behalf.
Who's your sister?
Imma.
We want to wait for her, because we have her card.
She asked me to speak for her.
Okay, then, okay. Please identify yourself. Thank you. So we can have a record. Thank you.
Yeah. My name is Niall Hafiz. I would like to take a moment of silence for the 10,000 people who have passed away in the last 30 days in Palestine, and make the A'as well for them. Thank you. The people of Palestine did not start suffering one month ago. Their suffering began 75 years ago, when they were kicked out from their homes and forced to flee. And today, this is just a continuation of the policy of the State of Israel, to remove the citizens of Palestine and place their own citizens in these locouts. Over the last 30 days, 10,000 people have died, 4,000 of them to 5,000 of them are children. 50% of the population of Gaza is under 18 years old, and that is where the concentration of this current offensive is. Schools, hospitals, and civilian infrastructure is directly targeted, and even 89 UN workers were killed during this past month. I call upon you, city members, to draft a resolution of ceasefire, condemn the actions of Israel, and call for an end of our tax dollars funding this genocide. And we need to end our unconditional support for Israel. Every day, I open my phone for the last 30 days, and I can't escape the firsthand views of what's going on. And in the words of abolitionist William Forsen, "You can choose to look away, but you can never again claim you didn't know." So I tell you today, look, because now you know. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Malia Azam? No, not here? Okay. That's all the speaker cards. We have City Clerk Santana. Were there any emails received prior?
Yes, Mayor Chow. We did receive six emails from Sharif V., Dunyarta Siam Sudin and family, Jawahir Muhammad, Khalid Khan, Mohammed Khan, and Rashid Ahmed. Those emails were provided to the city council and printed for public viewing at the lobby. At this time, if any members of the public joining us on teleconference would like to give a public comment, please click on the raised hand icon on your GoToWebinar screen. We do have quite a few on the phone right now. We had some hands raised for a while, but I think they've put their hands down. But if you'd like to give a comment, please raise your hand again, and I will unmute you one at a time. And there are no more hand raises, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, we got one.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Yes, there we go. So we've got Hannah Hamadeh. Hannah, please unmute yourself. Hannah, you are still muted. If you can unmute yourself.
Okay. If you can hear me, if you choose, you can certainly email us your comment. We'll be happy to distribute that to the entire city council. Thank you all for being here, and at this point, we're going to close public comments. We're going to proceed with item number four, which is schedule of future events. Mr. Fox?
Good evening, mayor and council members. On the scheduled events, our annual veterans' recognition ceremony will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, in the morning, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at the Diamond Bar Center. This is a free event. City Hall will be closed on Friday, November 10th, in observance of Veterans Day holiday. Coffee with the Cop will be held on Saturday morning, November 11th, from 7:30 to 9:30 a.m. at the Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf on Diamond Bar Boulevard in the Sprouts Center. The Planning Commission will meet on Tuesday, November 14th, starting at 6:30 p.m. in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. There will be free catalytic converter etching on Wednesday, November 15th, between 9:00 and 11:00 a.m. at Calvary Chapel on Golden Springs. And our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 21st, starting at 6:30 p.m. here in the AQ&amp;B Auditorium.
Thank you so much. We'll now move on to item five, consent calendar. Mr. Fox?
On the consent calendar this evening, you have approval of the meeting minutes from October 17th, regular city council meeting, and the October 23rd, special closed session meeting, ratification of the check register dated October 11th through October 31st, adoption of a proclamation declaring November as Lung Cancer Awareness Month, adoption of a proclamation declaring November 1st as Extra Mile Day, adoption of a proclamation declaring Saturday, November 25th as Small Business Saturday, approval of a notice of completion for the Area 2 Residential Street Rehabilitation Project and the Golden Springs arterial rehabilitation project between Brea Canyon and Grand, approval of a vendor services agreement with Town and Country Rentals for special event equipment through June 30th, 2025, and approval of a First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Tait and Associates.
Mr. Fox? Can we please have the conversation outside, please? We need to finish our meeting. Thank you so much. Thank you. Mr. Fox, go ahead.
The last item, item 5.8, is approval of the First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Tait and Associates for engineering design services to prepare plans and specifications for the groundwater drainage improvement project on Cold Springs and the Pantera Park parking lot LED retrofit and hardcore resurfacing project, including an appropriation of $55,000 from the Measure W Fund 201, and a determination that the approval of the agreement for design services is not subject to review under the California Environmental Quality Act. And that concludes the consent calendar for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Would anyone like to pull any items for additional discussion or questions? If not, if I can have motion for approval?
I'll move the item, please, Mayor.
Second. We have a motion, a second. City Clerk Santana, can you take the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Tang?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Brotem Lu?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries 5-0. We're now move on to item six, public hearings. We have none tonight. Item seven, council consideration, we have none tonight. We'll move on to item number eight for council subcommittee reports and meeting attendance report. We'll start with Councilmember Tai.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it was a testament to the United States of America that we got to hear so many people be heard tonight, and whether you like or not what they said, they had the opportunity to say it. Remind me of, one of my favorite scriptures is Joshua 24:15, and it says, "As for me and my house, we will serve the Lord." And I would say, to paraphrase that, "As for me and my house, we will stand with Israel." I would like to remind people that tomorrow, you can please join us as we honor our veterans. It'll be 9:00 a.m. at Diamond Bar Community Center. We will honor six individuals who serve our country proudly. Mayor, maybe we need to take a break. Captain, could you see them out? Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Let me rephrase. Tomorrow, I hope everybody will join us as we honor our veterans. 9:00 a.m. at the Diamond Bar Center, we'll honor six individuals who served our country very proudly. One week from tomorrow, you have the opportunity to take advantage of the catalytic converter etching at Calvary Chapel, Golden Springs. They've done it several times. I heard a report just yesterday that catalytic converter theft is down, and those efforts certainly must be paying off. So with that, I will say good night, and God bless you.
Councilmember Tang?
Well, I'm very happy that this month, we're going to have a proclamation for Lung Cancer Awareness. And as I recall, last month, we went to Diamond Bar Ranch High School football game to support the breast cancer awareness month. Both lung cancer and breast cancer are still the number one cancers for the citizens. And I'm very happy that our city is not only providing anything from the street, from park, from the housing issues, we also provide a platform to promote public health, to let people be aware of the lung cancer and the breast cancer. And the best thing to prevent breast cancer is to do an annual checkup for women's above 40 years old. The best thing to prevent the lung cancer is stop smoking, because smoking is still the number one, the highest risk for the lung cancer. So everybody, if you have friends and who needs a breast cancer, or a family member who needs a breast cancer screen, encouragement to go to the doctor. If you have, know somebody to continue smoking, and encourage them to stop smoking, that would be the best thing to deal with these two cancers. With that, I'll close my comment, and good night.
Thank you. Councilmember Lowe?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank all the speakers that came to join us tonight. Thank you for sharing your thoughts and your hearts and your passion with us. Thank you for educating us. How can you not be moved by hearing about the killing and the deaths of thousands of people and children? Sadly, that happens, as one of you mentioned, it happens not just this month, but continuously, and not just in the Middle East, but in Asia, in Europe, just so many places in our globe. This is, this atrocity, this killing is happening everywhere. And it's just...
Please don't do that. Please don't do that. Let us finish our meeting.
Mayor, we can, Mayor, we can either take a break, or we can close the meeting. Under the brown net, we can, if there's disruption, we can take a break, and if the disruption doesn't end, we can clear the room and then continue the meeting.
We're going to go and close the meeting at this point. Thank you.
Coward!
I was told that we would be able to see, even if we didn't have a little bit of time.
We already did. We still, we have public comments. We need to close. We have to close the meeting. Thank you.
If you're going to die, baby killer, ceasefire! We need a ceasefire! Everybody out! Give me a lawful order to clear the council chambers. Everybody out! Baby killer! Ceasefire! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now!